At this time, we will now hear any public comments that may be on the agenda that you'd like to comment on. Thank you. Approve the minutes for a January meeting. So moved. Properly moved and second, all in favor say aye. Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved. Maya Mar.
Currently, we have an ordinance on the agenda tonight to... Yeah, 15-02-06 to advertise the 2015 Water Main Relocation Project, which is in preparation for our upcoming street project. We completed design this month and are prepared to advertise that project if the council decides to move forward. Y'all have any questions about the resolution of the project in general?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 15-02-06, the 2015 Water Main Location Advertising for Bids.
It is a properly moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All oppose? Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved.
Do you want me to go ahead and...
Please.
I don't really have anything else to discuss on my report. One thing I would like to direct y'all's attention to is the second page of the handout that I gave you. It's a proposed schedule for bidding the project. Unfortunately, since the way this month and next month failed, we're not going to be able to open bids before the next council meeting. I would ask the council to consider having a special call meeting sometime towards the end of March, perhaps the week of March 30th, to allow us to award the 2015 Water Main Project and also advertise the 2015 Street Project. If we don't do that, it's going to set us back about 20 days on our schedule. But I'll leave that to the council, whether, how y'all want to proceed with that, whether you want to have a special call meeting to award the project or wait until the April regular council meeting. And that's the two line items down at the bottom of the sheet, down at the bottom of the page. And this is just a heads up on this. If y'all want to wait until next month to see how it falls out, if y'all are already having another special call meeting or something else, we could wait until that time. But it's completely a council's pleasure, whatever y'all want to do. And that's it from me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Resolution.
I'm going to accept the report.
Properly moved to accept.
Second.
And second. All in favor say aye. All pay? Let the record reflect that it's unanimously approved. At this time, we look at Resolution Number 15-02-05, Waste Water Treatment Plan.
Now, council, just to let you know what this is, this is just a annual renewal we have to do every year with LDEQ. That's why our little gun of water discharge permit, we have to wire by long and half. And that's just part of it. We have to have this resolution there to go with everything when I play for the committee. That's what this is based here. It's just a housekeeping procedure you do every year.
Looked through to accept Resolution 15-02-05.
It's properly moved and second. All in favor say aye. Oppose? Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved. Resolution Number 15-02-04.
This, again, is the same format we're going through for this with the industrial part two point.
Motion to accept Resolution 15-02-04.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor say aye. Oppose? Record reflect that unanimously approved. Resolution Number 15-02-03. Capital Outlay. Fire Department.
It's a budget amendment for Fire Department and Capital Outlay. They purchased several pieces of equipment to help improve the fire ratings for the city. And we're asking if we could remove those funds to capital, amend the budget and remove those funds to Capital Outlay instead of taking out the Fire Department's regular day-to-day operating expense.
Finance Committee has met on this, Mr. Finance's recommendation that we adopt Resolution 15-02-03, and I make that motion.
Properly moved and second. All in favor say aye. Number nine, Resolution Number 15-02-02.
Again, it's another budget amendment. If you recall, I have stapled to the first, the top resolution, the current we're voting on, I have stapled to it the one from last year when we first passed this resolution for the cameras here at the community center. Well, we did pass it last year, but the work didn't get completed until January of this year. And so those funds didn't carry over to this year's budget. So we're asking for that amendment to the budget for this year.
Once again, it was brought forward in the Finance Committee meeting on Friday, and it was approved by the Finance Committee that we accept this resolution to pay for those favorites cameras that was placed in the community center, which we had already set aside for in the resolution, which was already done in '14.
Move that we accept the...
Did you say all four? Without, for all four? Did you say all four?
For the community center.
Properly moved and second.
Have a discussion?
Yes, sir.
Just curious, because since we have the old resolution plus this new one. And in '14, the amount of $1,000 was going to be allotted, I guess is one of the reasons.
Did we spend it last year? Was there extra money? That extra money was used for... That money that didn't carry over from last year, where was that? That was utilized in what, expenses?
Probably the regular community center expenses.
It's a new point, I was curious, was there a reason for the delay in placing, you know, doing it last year versus this year?
Whether he started, it's a maintenance, putting them up there, but he didn't, he started it. It was December, December, November when he started. And then he didn't finish over it. January, he had some small problems on the deal. But he didn't finish the work of it, finally cut the check. Once he got it completed, it happened about two weeks. Yeah, that worked fine.
Where are the monitors for those cameras? I mean, where does it, where does it send a signal? We got a box somewhere. And then there's no remote areas where we can, you know, there's, there's no other access to view that from another monitor?
What you're talking about, setting up a deal. Disgusting.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Did somebody second that? All in favor say aye. Oppose? Resolution Number 15-02-01, General Fund.
We have another amendment to the General Fund, and it's in the line item for the airport. We want to amend expenditures and revenue. So the expenditure is $30,000 for the airport for the fuel purchases. And we're going to add a new, a new line item for fuel in the expenditures and the revenue so that you can see the difference in how it watches. But now, we have more revenues coming in fuel that will wash all these additional charges out. We make, this airport is doing real good and it's making a lot of money now. We also have $6,880. Due to the increase, and this is due to the increase in the cost. The energy bill now is a little higher because of the new phone systems and fuel lines and all that we have there, use more energy out there now. Also, we have three new phone lines there, so that's also another expense. We have to have three lines, one for the phone line itself, for the internet there, and also for the gas line, the credit card line. And we also have another airport manager's gasoline usage for his transportation back and forth. So the expenses has increased slightly, and we asked for an amendment for those items. On the revenue side, $10,000. We have, I don't have my financials out right yet. In addition to what we already have in the budget, we want to increase that for $10,000 because like I said, we're making more money with the fuel we have now. And the rental property income and the building hangar space revenue, they're making more money, so we want to amend the revenue for that line item as well.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 15-02-01.
Properly moved.
Increasing the expenditures and the revenue of airport.
And second. All in favor say aye. Resolution Number 15-02-07.
When we get to the monthly financial report, you will see we have several line items that are high, one of them being administrative salaries. And within this resolution, I have three items in there that will help us fix this, you know, this line item. One, we would like to amend for a position of a controller for $34, the overtime that was worked so far in administrative for $7,375, and the entity we had hired there at that time. We're asking for reimbursement for that, that amount, that you see, the $2,550 because that also, at that time, was not in the budget.
Neither was the $34,000, is that what you're saying?
Correct. These three, yes, sir, all three items, neither were in the budgets.
Why weren't they? Why weren't they in the budget? I think we created a budget, and it appears that we're creating a new position, and we're not staying within our budget. I mean, that's why you make a budget, stay within it. That's a lot of money.
$34,000.
$16,000, that's already been paid with the entity, and there's a difference of $15,000, right about $15, only for the remainder of this fiscal year. Until we look at the creation of that new position, till we get the job descriptions of that new position, and the council act and vote on that new position.
And they have the owners. You all should have the details of that new document. The alter did recommend that we create this position as well. Yes.
You don't have the money to create it. It's hard to sustain it.
We are saying that we don't have to approve only $16,000, about $16,000 left for the rest of the year. Is that what we is going to approve? Or will we do the, I'm sorry, the whole 30?
The whole 34 will be at a point right now, just for the end of this fiscal year, till we redo our budget and then look back at it. Because at this point right now, we hadn't accepted, we have the job description of that new position right now, which the council is going to vote on to look at and then vote on. But for right now, for the, for the purpose right now of still using the services of what we use right now, that ambition would finish us up for the remainder of the fiscal year until we sit down and vote on that position, creating that position of that controller, which again, which was, like I said, was recommended by the order, those separation of duties.
I have a question. Being a very general one. Wouldn't this be something that we could really split between General Fund and Utility Systems Funds to sort of help relieve the stress of... Because it would be a position that would be working in all departments.
That would be strictly up to the mayor and the council. That one, I mean, whoever that position would be for would have to get paid two checks because you can't cut one check out of two flung together and split it. That person would have to get two paychecks, I mean, every paper.
So utility... What about, well...
See arguments on both sides.
I can make a just a general comment. I mean, I'm looking at the job description. It appears to me that it's just, we're shifting responsibilities from some people to create a new position. It looks like the department heads can do, or should, in my opinion, should be doing some of these descriptions. And the clerk should be doing some of these, these jobs. And it appears we're just taking away from some of them and creating a whole new spot. I think it's not a good use of resources, in my opinion.
It does kind of appear that way. But one of the things that, that does, it allows the town to buy bulk items. And buying bulk items, you purchase, you purchase them at a much lower rate, even to the multitude that, that the city spends on, on various items. And if I remember correctly, the example that was shared was the one-month use in toilet paper, towels, and what are the other items that... It was a great enough savings that we would be making purchasing the same item that we're purchasing right now to really look into it.
And this person, Craig, will work directly with like the department heads. Right now, as a clerk, we don't, pretty much, we don't shop for the department heads. They're responsible for finding their own parts in their own, in the order, and then they give it to the clerk. And I might pay the bill or hell of that. But it's not the clerk's responsibility. We don't shop for them. They shop for themselves.
That's right.
And this person will...
And I wrote next to those items, department heads, which that could or should be part of their duties, as for the shopping, the things that they need. Yes.
I'm going to walk over here because the daddy everybody has wanted has finally come, and I've lost my voice. I was going to say, if you want to research it, if you look on the legislative order's website, follow it as a procurement, that may answer some of your questions on that. And my essential procurement is recommendation. Sorry, I had to walk.
So if we, if we get a person to do this, then it really saves a lot of money. Instead of, hey, you know, she buying in bulk in the place of somebody else just running out to Walmart, getting something and replacing it. And when she knows she can find the cheapest...
Yes, ma'am.
That's exactly one of the things that encouraged me to look into it. I felt, I felt better than being... Yes, it would shift the responsibility from the individual section. But in shifting, you're able to buy a larger quantity, thereby paying less, a lot less money per item than we would typically pay in.
Actually, they would be all, like, you go to doctors to get diagnosed with something or a settlement fee. But check, we're going back with those department heads. You know, sometimes people can get caught up certain self, I just do business with Joe. Because me and him, how we are, we have nobody really double checking, see, with that same item you getting here, we can get that cheaper here. So it kind of cut out that, you know, all that, that favor to them. And they just go on doing a double check, check, double stack, I mean, double check, lot of those parts. But the clerk, the only thing the clerk want to do is cut the check for purchase, purchase on. We have nobody really researching those purchases.
So the department heads will no longer...
Yeah, they will. They will, but they're working collaboration together. You, she brings, they bring something to them, she still would check, find, or we still would find and save it for the city, how we can purchase the value. And that's still what help with the department here because they're so busy running their department. They may be tied up with a lot of stuff. I know I need this, but they got time really to take out their business schedule, do a lot of research.
Does that justify a new salary?
My, my, my question is, does that position justify having a new position? It's the savings versus salary. I can't wrap my head around it.
I'm thinking, are we already paying this, we already paying this person? And all we're going to do is pick up what's... Because we already pay, we're paying him already, right?
But that's where this budget amendment's coming in. Because we're paying her, but we're using other, too, of our money to pay it. Someone's going to come up short. Administrative, salary, I'm going to come up short because we're already paying. The Finance Committee recommendation was to do it and look at creating this actual position. Allocate the money for this year, and then before the budget comes around the end, we'll get, they're doing this. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 15-02-07 upon the recommendation of the Finance Committee that with this being through the end of this year and that the personnel and the mayor get together, look at creating this as a permanent position between now and...
The next budget.
Next budget here.
It's properly moved and second. All in favor say aye. Oppose? Is there anyone from Boca here? No? Are you with Boca?
He's the first to check.
He's the first to check.
Bringing you here for God. Okay. Airport manager. Son of George.
Our electrical project, lighting system, I'm at... Not loud? Okay. On our project, the electrical lighting that was finished recently, they met late two weeks ago and approved everything, so our system is done, finished. I think that's a very good thing. Y'all approved at some point to upgrade one of our hangers. We're doing that. We have the top on it, and by the way, it's 50 years old, the top, so it was indeed... We put a new top, we painted it. We're waiting on the door now to put it in. We, Skipper and I checked around to see approximately what it would cost. It's gonna be about $30,000, but the sheriff's department furnished the labor. So hopefully, maybe we're gonna do that for around 20, I'm guessing there. So that's gonna save us some. I told you a while back about a VA project. Dr. David Gavirio, or I have the problem with his last name. He's a local pilot, flies for Angel Flight. And he has already had it approved through the government, the project that he's gonna be doing. And he'll be flying veterans wherever they need to be. And not only him, but there'll be a lot of pilots involved in it. I don't know of any programs like that around here. But it's gonna be based here in Windsorboro. He's in the process now of getting the computer set up, all of that done. So anyway, we're gonna have a first here in Louisiana and Windsorboro. Flying veterans. So I'm real excited about that. And then on the last end, that would come back to gas sales and projects out there. Y'all approved a new gas system, which we installed and is working real well, and pilots are coming in. I just want to throw some figures out at you, something we did that has really made pilots happy. And I know, council meeting, you like to hear happy things. The first fuel we bought was $4.40 a gallon. That's aviation fuel, and that's aviation fuel is very expensive. So we decided, the mayor and I did, basically myself, we got prices from all the airports around with probably 100-mile radius. And to see how much fuel, how much we should charge. So we cut it down the middle, which put us at about 75 cents a gallon profit, which is good. Fuel dropped, and it went down. I checked on it, and it went to $2.76 a gallon, which is a big drop. So I got with the mayor, and he approved buying a bulk of fuel, which we did. Our fuel was $5.15. We dropped it down to $3.85. We were getting 75 cents, if y'all are doing the math. Anyway, now we're making $1.09 a gallon instead of 75 cents, which gave the pilots a $1.30 freight on gasoline. The three lowest prices in Louisiana, Windsor is one of them. The other two airports are only six cents less than we are. So we have dropped the price for pilots, increased it for fuel sales, and pilots are excited. And I appreciate the mayor allowing me to purchase some fuel there. So as long as this lasts, we have got very competitive prices. You can look it up on the internet, the pilots, you can research it, and if you're flying anywhere around, you know, dropping to Windsorboro. So I think it's good for our town. And I just want to say I appreciate the council for allowing us to get the new system, which is working great. And for allowing the project on the building, and we're gonna try to do this cheap as we can. Veteran, I think, I'm gonna tell you about the association here, it's gonna be very good for our town. Website will be queued in here in Windsorboro. And I don't hold any other around, and Dr. David, as I call him, he got, it's already approved for a nonprofit status. So it's just a good thing for our town. You have any questions concerning our airport, I'd be trying, glad to try to answer them. Pretty peaceful right now. I like that.
I make a motion that we accept the airport manager's monthly job, monthly report.
If properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. And just, I'd just like to echo that, as you can see with the work that's been done, he is a great credit to the city of Windsorboro and our airport, a great credit.
And reflection of that, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd say something. Brother George is doing a great job. And as you know, for the last 20 years, the city of Windsorboro has not received any revenue, zero revenue from the airport. This year, that we're gonna generate $30,000, am I correct? $30,000 in revenue from the city. This is a big step, and this is what we are looking to do to generate revenue in our area. And I attribute all of this to Brother George, he's done a great job. And I appreciate the council and what y'all have done for the support.
Thank you, Billy.
Public work. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I hope y'all have been able to notice our signs that were replaced. They're really bright at night. There's really few of them. They've been working hard at it. Weather's been accountable battle against them. They're probably about 90% complete. And hope to get our list. We're gonna like a few, so we're gonna get those ordered and get them put in place. Hopefully by this week, they're gonna be busy getting ready for the Black Heritage Parade and Extravaganza. So they're kind of pulled off of, hopefully after that, we, in a couple of weeks, have that project going. And like I say, the event Saturday for the Black Heritage Extravaganza, they start around noon time, I think they start those activities. We're busy getting that ready. Crew's been busy cleaning out, training, trying to keep the leaves. I didn't think the leaves were ever gonna fall. And we're still picking up out of the yard, so...
It seems like everywhere I went today, I saw them.
Right.
They were everywhere.
Right, everywhere you go. And I want to bring y'all up to date on what I know about the... And if y'all are anxious, well, know about the Turkey Creek Bridge being open. They have got all the concrete poured on the road ramps. They like pouring little side rail, concrete side rail. As soon as weather's permitted, they'll do that, which hopefully within two weeks. And once they finish that, then they'll be down to laying asphalt, putting it drenched up. So they're coming along real fast now. Hopefully by first, middle of April. I'm hoping by Catfish Festival time, they got it open, because that creates a lot after traffic, you have things to close. So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I moved that week.
Part two. I'm sorry, I meant to mention Robert. We're doing, you asked for some condemning houses here a while back?
Yes.
And Robert and I have got started on these, let Robert take this over right now, because he's got the list to get in.
Yes, you see in your package, Steve, I have five that I put in there. And the reason those five are there is because those are the ones that have been the most protested, we talked about the most. You see in there that I sent out eleven to five people, and I see two here have responded, Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Shaw. And what this does, this start process, that these have been notified. And there are gonna be a series of those coming towards you all as we go. Like I said, this is just the start of, this is our point, we get it kicked off. And some of the people here, I'm gonna recognize it, let us speak, because some of the people had a short period of time to respond. With me getting information, February being a short month, like one of the ladies maybe got there Thursday or Friday. But these two have responded. Some of them live out of town, Dallas, Texas, and different places. So they're not gonna respond. And some of them, they have moved, you know, and not knowing where they are. But the thing is, like I said, I got five others out, and I have more houses on this, so I'm just bringing these right now. Like Ms. Shaw here, her problem's gonna be in what we call the taxi of, redemptive period. And you know what that is, you know, you own it, but you don't know, in a way. And back here, I mean, not back here, during the election and then legislative session, what they did was, they voted on it, put for the people, they cut the redemptive period in half from 36 months to 18, but they didn't make it retroactive. They didn't go back and get them, or put them on 18 months. It's effective January the first, 2015, so you don't have to wait three years to be 18 months. So therefore, you know, I sent them eleven there here, so I'm gonna let them tell their story. Ms. Shaw?
It was in May of 2012, this land came up during tax. It was in a tax sale. And I did vote on this, on this man 100%. And it's time before the law had changed, 18 months at the time, I'm still in the three-year bracket. And my three years don't, won't be up until the end of this year. So I'm not, the way I see it, I'm not in that bracket with the 18 months. And and the property had not been redeemed. So the way I see it, nothing I can do about this property until everything is finalized, redeemed, and done like the way it's gonna be done legally in the courthouse. So I feel that I'm not the person that should have to be in the part where the letter was sent to me, giving a ten day about the land being condemned. So I'm just here on my part, standing on my part for it. That there's nothing I can do with this right now until the time. When it come that time, then I'll, you know, do my part that I supposed to do on that land. But right now, there's nothing else I can do. If I do get somebody to, or either the town do tear it down, get somebody else to do it, then somebody's probably still come back before that time and claim the land, and I've now lost money, you know, on that. So that's all I can say.
But what conditions are house in, Rob?
Horrible.
Horrible.
It's horrible.
What's your intention? Do you intend to tear it down, or do you intend to fix it up?
Yeah, fixing up. Oh, it can be fixed.
It's gonna be, my intention is to tear it down. To clean the land up.
You can tear it down and make it part of, if these people redeem it.
Right, right.
Now, I wouldn't say come back and build a $60,000 house on that land, but if the house is in bad shape, that's part of redeeming, that's part of buying property to tax sale. It's up to you to either bring it up to standard or tear it down. In this case, it's not up to you to wait three years or something to happen.
That's right.
That's all, it's kind of the nation law, right?
Yeah, and what'd you pay for it, $100, $50?
Oh, I think that's what she tried to say, Mr. Tab, she's the owner, but somebody purchased it from her in a tax sale, so right now she don't have right to it because I'm on the bottom of the bundle right now.
Oh, you can buy it back.
She hasn't really been right.
If you want to keep the land, you just go buy it back and then tear it down. Oh, I thought she bought the house.
I didn't pay it over to the other person.
You're the visual owner.
You're the visual owner, you go buy it back.
This land was, this was doing on a tax sale. You know, the people that don't pay taxes on their land, and then you can come there and beat on that. That's where I'm at right now in the process of like, man, it's been two years, right, two years.
Did you buy it in a tax sale?
I purchased, I bought, I paid the tax on it.
And how much did you pay?
It was like $266.
Did you pay from the city and the sheriff department?
Ma'am?
Did you pay both the city and the sheriff's department?
To make the tax.
Uh huh.
Well, I've been paying tax on it the last couple of years. I paid, I think this is the city, I paid the ones, and one we have to pay at the courthouse, and one that I think they...
The land is corrupted, but it's in the house, it's not, it's not fixable, right?
No, it's not.
So she's still on the property. Right. But the destruction has to... She is still the owner, and at this point, to have you correcting from home, she has options to let us tear it down. But whoever we get, get us a more, it's gonna cost a lot more.
It's gonna cost a lot more.
Or she can get somebody to come in just to tear it down.
Just to frame it, sir.
Yeah, you could have it torn down and keep up with your costs.
Right.
And then make that part of the repurchase price. In other words, if someone came back and reclaimed it...
That's right, yeah, that too, they're paying.
They paid you back the 200 plus interest. And if you had to tear the house down, and say you got another couple hundred dollars, they had to pay you that back.
Right, right. And if you, if the city was to tear it down, you'd allow the city to tear it down, then next year, that whatever the price was to tear it down, go on those taxes.
No, that's just been changed. You got to pay that price, then you still pay the taxes.
That's what I'm saying, though. That, you would have to add that to the taxes.
That amount.
That amount to the taxes. And if you didn't want to do that, then you could come back and then have it, have it torn down and pay parts yourself. And then all you would have to do is pay the regular taxes on an annual basis, Rob, am I correct?
Yeah, but she'd be better off, Billy, get any demolition permit herself and just get it tear down for the...
Oh, we have to let it out for being, you know, we have to let it be.
Well, she, I talked to her about that, and I explained it to her, but she did tell me, she said, you know, that was her plan. She said she has some sons, and that was her plan to do that. But she basically here to explain, you know, her situation. I guess she's talking about a timeframe, you know, or whatever thing like that. So, but she said that she, that was her plan to tear it down with the son.
Well, the town has, in the past, given a time...
She's allowed in that, maybe for eight days, come in and tell us when she plans to do this, and how long she needs to do that.
Yeah.
Plan it and tell us.
And Robert, she can, she could get her own demolition permit and have her own relatives or friends tear it down.
Yeah, we talked about, she and I have talked about that, that's what she wants, that's what she's saying.
But keep up with the hours and everything, so if a person comes back in three years to redeem it, you can say, okay, I'm out to 200, plus I'm out another three, four, five hundred dollars for tearing the house down. So they'd have to pay you seven hundred dollars.
Basically said, ma'am, you need an extension. You could come before the council and get an extension on that timeframe.
If you can do it.
We have done before, like, I think we did 90 days, we did a process a couple of years ago. But we could extend it within that timeframe then.
We'd just like to see you be moving toward tearing it down.
Right.
Getting your demolition permit, moving...
Well, sir, I didn't even think that this was gonna come up all of a sudden like that. I think that this something's gonna happen, you know, maybe after, or I knew that, I knew it's got to be turned down, but I didn't think this was gonna come up right now until this, the end of this year. I mean, this was just all of a sudden, maybe, ma'am, what?
What happened was that we actually tried to get a name to that house for a while. And a name, when I talked to you, and we were unable to get a name, the only name that was on it was the man that was deceased. Jerry, Jerry Holman, so that's all I ever got. And I went to clerk the office several times, and that's all they ever gave me. And just about stroke, a few weeks ago, I went there again, and then your name came up on it. And I even cried to City Hall about who paid taxes on this. All they said was, there was no name, but it was paid and only the post office bought it. And then a couple of weeks ago, then your name showed up on it.
And Robert, we'll work with her, but she's got to start making move toward tearing it down. Like at least getting your permit to tear it down.
So how long does the permit last? How long does that permit last?
Well, you can get with, do you issue the permits?
Yeah, Robert, I do.
Yeah, you can skip with them, it's, no need taking up council time, but they'll work with you. And as long as they can report back to the council a month or so, if you're making steps, then they'll allow you time to tear it down.
And the key point, ma'am, like you said, you won't get out any money. You attach that money with that property, when they redeem it, you have your money back.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have one more. Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, sir.
Keep coming up.
I don't need to come up because I really don't have anything to say, because the letter that you sent us, we don't have 1%.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
It's three people that are involved in there.
Right, because I don't count.
Yeah, and they only have like so much percentage, and I tried to say to everybody...
But they will not spell it, so we can't do anything about it. it.
It's our property, what we're talking about.
We have to talk about it.
But still again, with the entities involved in it, that's still a business building.
Well, the thing about Ms. Lawrence and her husband, Ms. Lawrence is on it.
He's not.
And Mr. JD is on it, and then, and, uh, Lauren is on it. There's three people on, one, they're over the property, old Ed, property place.
The third, E.
And that's where, that's, that's where, and I tried to send, you know, I sent one after Ms. Lawrence, and then one after, uh, it's Gladys Lawrence, they care about her sister or something, and I tried to get with her, and I don't know if I sent, you know, the right address, but, uh, then again, I have, I mentioned about this house before, a couple of years ago, they've been like this. But I sent the two people that was on the, was on the record of it.
Well, Robert, the three of them, the three owners, that's that third E. They all understand that if we tear it down, it's gonna be a tremendous amount more owed them.
I made that clear, I made that clear, you know, I, you know.
If they all got together.
You know, except one, I hadn't seen Gladys, I just missed, I hadn't talked to Gladys. But I remember I talked to Mr. Lawrence one time about it. And if you see on the paper, you know, it gives you a legal description of it, uh, in your package, you know, but it tells who's what, where, in, in your package there.
Ms. Lawrence, my family had the same situation probably about eight years ago. It was a property that my mom owned from my dad, and there was some of those, it was probably about five brothers and sisters in there. And we had to tear the house down, we was on the same, the house was condemned. And if the city would have torn it down, then the names gonna split, that building, had those owners that was in there, you still was responsible. So we got together and then wound up on my mother's end, got together with the kids, and we tore it down on her children. But still again, we were all still responsible. It still was third, it still was obligated.
So, uh, the percentage of whoever had the largest percentage, that's what you're saying?
When they, when they set up, you, you.
It's going to be on that.
Whoever, at my understanding, I may be wrong, if you and your husband tore it down and kept that billing receipt, if y'all went to, am I right?
They're, they're in a, it, it's really a complicated legal problem when you've got three owners.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, you know, I would think if they ever forced it to a share sale, and she tore it down and had proof that she spent 500, 600, $700 to do it, I would think in the, the judge, can't speak for the judge, but I would think the judge would award you that amount that you used to tear it down first, and then any money left over would be split three ways.
Because the situation right there with the property that I can talk on that I own, that when we bought it back here in the early 90s, three brothers, three siblings owned it. One had kept the upkeep, paid the taxes and all like that. When they got ready to sell it, it was in the lawyer's office that day, he objected because he wanted more money, and he had his documentation. And so we didn't buy it that day, we came back about three days later, and the brothers and sisters agreed to pay it, to give him that, and they did, he got a lump out of that because he had the receipt of the work, the taxes, all that he had done.
And I think the judge would award that to you.
That's what, um, I'm gonna let my husband get with the mayor and, uh, state on that. I, I don't have anything to do with it. I, I was just came with you, said a prayer for Mr. Lawrence, for him also. So, this house, I, I got the letter, and I told John about it, he told me not to worry about it, he would get the view, because he don't have a point to sell or something in that. He tried to buy it, but he wouldn't sell it, so.
Well, we, the, the town, we, we just want it torn down because it's.
My husband take care of it.
Then that would be fine, if you could, you could get him to get with the mayor, and the mayor needs me to attend a meeting, I'll be there, and look at all the things that he can do in my place.
When you get back into town, we will contact.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have, ma'am.
What is your pleasure with the?
Make a motion to accept the public's report.
Second.
If it's properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bar chief wanted to report. Bar chief, uh, is, is not here. Uh, we know that he's in the, in the hospital right now. He called me yesterday, uh, he says he's feeling much better. I just wanted to share this with you, that he shared with me. They, they drained 60 pounds of fluid.
67 as of this afternoon. They got another seven pounds today.
Good shit.
57.
And, and from my understanding, that's the major problem. Once, once that's off, you know, he's, he's, he's gonna be doing a lot better.
Then you just keep it on.
Yeah, I believe he will.
Mayor, may I say something to the mayor?
That's a lot of food. Yes, sir.
I got word earlier this evening that he was supposed to come home today.
Oh, good. Good. Good one.
Mayor, mayor.
Yes.
May I move to accept his report as it's been given to us since we've all had a chance to read it, without hearing it?
If it's properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Police wanted to report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the month, January 2015, February 1615. Criminal charges, we have 41 total for the year as of the year 72. Traffic charges for the month, we had 90, total for the year right now was 181. Highway accidents, we had 10. Parking losses, 4. Total accidents, 14. Call for service, 514.
Question, chief? Uh, your professional opinion, if there were, if there was beer sold on Sundays, do you think that, uh, that would affect, this report, it would be higher? Or your Sunday is less, less active than any other day of the week as a result of that?
No, I wouldn't think so, 'cause they go on out of town, get it anyway. I mean, I mean, they, 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 even though we don't sell it here, they go and get it anyway. I mean, they, they bring it back to town, so I don't think it would be. I think if you got to sign this, 'cause, 'cause they going, and I feel like, they gonna go out of town and get it, my way, get it here, and we keep the tax money.
Okay, I was just wondering if that would affect our crime.
No, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. Like I said, they going get it anyway.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I just have a statement I'd like to make. Um, I don't drink, but I don't think, uh, it's gonna make a difference in selling it on Sundays, because, uh, we, we're focusing now on just alcohol, when you have some people driving, taking three lower tabs at a time, so what's the difference? Uh, you know, if they're drinking, if they're taking these drugs. I, I don't see a difference anywhere.
Yeah, you're right.
You know? But that's just my opinion.
Move to accept. All in favor, say aye. Opposes, let the record reflect that it will unanimously approve. Human resource wanted to report.
Yes. Humane officer. What's your report?
Humane officer.
Uh, number dog foster for the month, one, two for the year. New dog for the month, eight. Total handled for the month, 32, 550 pounds of dog food. Total in the pen, 23, 16 for the new year. One cat foster, one for the year. Two escaped, two for the year. For the month, two. Total handled, three, 5 pounds of pet food. Total in the pen, 31. And one Miss Land Allen. Scott.
Move that we accept.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that it will unanimously approve. Economic and development report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, the stench that we have at the industrial park with the corn and rotten corn, uh, is being moved. Uh, they in the process of moving that, and they're gonna do it for, uh, put it up where they are, have precision level property and to get rid with it. But they still have to, we have to take into consideration the wet, uh, you know, it, it being wet and being able to distribute and get rid of it. Talked to Mr. Martin, uh, this afternoon here, and he understands the situation, and they are, but, uh, Alator and Lakeland is, is doing a good job and, and, uh, doing away with that, that situation that we have. Next thing I'd like to say is, as you all know, the federal chemical oil industry is as bad as it's been, uh, since the early 80s. Uh, and, and it has drastically hurt, uh, the economy of not only Windsboro Franklin Parish, but the entire state and the southern portion of the United States. I would, I would mention to say that, uh, all the federal chemical oil industry people that are involved in production, uh, of those products, uh, we, we losing somewhere in the neighborhood 55, 60% of those jobs at present time. Uh, and, and you may not realize what impact those revenues have on our community, but it is, it is tremendous. Uh, it really is tremendous. Uh, hopefully that everything will turn back around real soon. They're predicting that it will, and, and hopefully that, that we will, uh, we'll be able to see an increase, uh, here in the, in the, uh, upcoming months. And next thing, we have, we have, uh, been in discussion, uh, with a couple of people that is interested in, in expanding an operation, uh, and, and hopefully that, that we will, we will be successful in that. Uh, yeah, all of that is at the very beginning stage, you know, they doing, they're still in the design phase of it, but we're gonna be working with them to make sure that, that if it's possible, that we're gonna do that. If we do that, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna be upfront, that I, if I'm still here, I'm gonna come to the city council, and I think that the city, uh, should be a part of that. I'm gonna ask them to be a part of it so that we can, uh, be supportive in economic development in our community. Uh, that's, that's what we're doing. Uh, and I, I know the city council is, is supportive of economic development and creating jobs as well. Uh, I, I sent each one of you a email this afternoon, uh, giving you some updated information. Uh, and, and I only, I, the only reason that it was only sent out this afternoon is because we only got the information in Tab and I, and the mayor's been involved with it, uh, getting information on it, uh, for the last several weeks, and, and we got a response back. And what I did is I just forwarded that information, uh, to each one of you. Uh, again, that is something that is, that is on the table, and, and I fully explained what we needed to do with that. Uh, but before anything is done in those issues, on those issues, uh, it will, it will have to involve the full approval of the city council. Is that good enough with that, Tab?
Yeah.
Uh, to go with that. But we will, if there's any further, uh, additional information that is brought forth, we will send that to you as well. Uh, and that's, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Billy.
I make a motion to approve the economic development report.
Second. Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Very good report, Billy.
Thank you.
Community center wanted to report. Uh, community center wanted to report, uh, it's not here, you should, each have a copy of it. Is it properly moved? And second, all in favor, say aye.
Please say aye. Please say aye.
Brother George made a motion. Red, second, red second. Item number 20, monthly fund answer four.
Okay, uh, did everyone receive the reports on time, first of all? Well, we should be right at, um, 59%. Every fund right now is okay, but, uh, you look at general fund, it's actually at 81.2%. But that is only because of the resolution from last month, resolution 150101, that was the transfer fund. So that's why that is high right now. When we get that reimbursement back, that's gonna take that back down where it needs to be along with the amendments we did tonight. So as of right now, the, uh, every fund is okay.
Yeah. Sales tax, uh, transfers is at 84.7%. And we should be at about 60.
That's what I'm just talking about.
Oh, that's what you, you asked for reimbursement? Okay, so that's, all right. And administrative salaries, did we fix that tonight?
Yes, sir, we fixed that tonight.